Good evening everyone, we will go ahead and call our one and only meeting, City Council meeting in the month of July to order. Boy, it's gonna be a great month. I always enjoy the fifth Thursdays of every month too. But yes, this is our first and our only meeting. It is the first meeting of our new year, fiscal year. So we'll hear about that coming up. But right now, what I'd like to do is observe our traditional moment of silent reflection, followed by the pledge. And as we enter our silent reflection time, I would ask us to remember the family of Seth Polling. Seth and I have known each other since we were four and six at Chapel Hill United Methodist Church growing up. Seth was such an inspiration for our community over the past several years in his fight with ALS, a disease that doesn't usually take much longer than about a year and a half to maybe two years before the body succumbs to it. And Seth lasted over nine years. So Seth's faith and his family and support and the community's support really meant a lot to him and kept him going. So let's keep the Polling family and everyone that's touched by the Polling family in your thoughts and prayers this evening as we enter our moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Delegate Martin, would you be so kind as to leave us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know, I always appreciate when I go to the Capitol for different things and Robbie sees me up in the stratospheres of the Capitol. I always get a nice shout out as the mayor at Buchanan. I know Robbie, I'm sorry, it's not as grand here, but thank you for being here this evening. We have our delegate Robbie Martin with us this evening. So thank you for being here. Real quick, before we begin this evening's business, I would like to ask the council to retreat to the kitchen area for a brief executive session relative to property matters that we will most likely have some decisions on later in the agenda. Can I get a motion to that effect, please? Thank you. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We are in executive session, we're gonna take a brief reset.
All right, is there a motion to a return from executive session? Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Rylands, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. So for the record, you guys recording, we have returned from executive session where per state code six dash nine any dash four, we discuss property matters and there could be some decisions made down in strategic issues for discussion and or vote relative to those discussions. Okay, thank you to everyone for indulging us in that exercise and we will now go down to our recognized guests which we have are listing here. First up is Jody Light.
I'm in silence, see me.
Because it's over?
Yes, Randy, you'll feel like this in a couple of weeks. Trust me.
He's a little tense right now.
Well, for not tense.
I know that feeling, I know that feeling.
First, on behalf of city council, I want to extend our sincere thanks to you and your committee members, a few of which are here, Mrs. Henderson, Mr. Martin, as well as everyone that worked hard with you. We heard nothing but positive feedback. Everyone loved the event space that we've provided in the southern part of downtown. So thanks to you for all the hard work. We really enjoyed it and downtown tasted and smelled really good.
Yes, it did. I just wanted to, you know, I'd come before you before a little trepidation, not knowing how will it go, you know, there's a lot of challenges and I'm not going to get away from those. There were challenges, but Jerry and the staff went above and beyond to meet those challenges and when we called them, they came with no complaints. I've talked to Jerry, I've talked to Matt Gregory, I've talked to Steve Leicock, just about everyone I can think of. Just, sorry, mainly.
Be careful.
To our knowledge, there were no negatives, I hope, I hope I don't hear any. Just to give you a really quick rundown, I did put some information there. We did end up with 42 barbecue teams, about 50 judges, 14 food vendors, 15 crafters, five art cars. Those came from like 20 states. We had, first time we did a cruise in, we had 65 cars. We thought that was very respectable, we wouldn't have to go 50, but we were fine with 65. And we already have our first sponsor, Foster Marketing Group, has stepped up with a very generous donation to go towards next year's event. They were very excited. What I left for you is two things. We, because when we were here before, it was, nobody knows what's going on, so Deanna Grog and her daughter actually hand-delivered that back letter you have to every business 10 days before the event, talked to every business on Main Street and some off the sides, you know, that would be effective. And she said she got nothing, they didn't know what was coming, but she said she got nothing but positive or glad it's back, positive response. I have since talked to two or three restaurants, shops, they said they were very busy. Two of them said they were as busy as, if not more so than Strawberry Festival, I don't know what that gauge is. Some of them said with the cruise in, they loved it because people did come into their shops. So again, it's going to be a mixed bag, I'm sure. What I gave you there is just literally as they popped up and they tagged us, there's probably close to 30 different comments. I'm looking for negatives, I keep waiting on the shoe to drop, I'm hoping I don't have one, I haven't heard any yet. But there's some really tremendous things, not about just me, not about just our committee, but about our city. And if you look, some of them are talking about how great the city was, how friendly it was, how nice it looked, how cooperative it was. And one of the, and they're from, they're from barbecue teams, you'll look, there's different states, they're from residents here, there's from a couple of major sponsors, from judges, from crafters, from the art car people. So I think Buchanan shined and hopefully our event shined. One of, if you look at the very last page, second from the bottom, that's the only one I'm going to read, this one one of the art cars, this lady blogged, she's from Houston, Jada August. And if you noticed, she blogged every day, coming to Buchanan, our conversations and then there, and I think it's worth the public understanding that the comment she made, she says, nestled in the heart of West Virginia lies a charming town, filled with stunning natural beauty, fascinating history, plenty of fun things to do. Buchanan is a hidden gem that offers a fascinating his, sorry, is a hidden gem that offers a unique blend of small-town charm and big-city entertainment. Whether you're looking for something new to try or seeking an adventure, there are plenty of fun activities to explore, from outdoor adventures to quirky attractions. They spent the day exploring that town, did some shopping, got to meet up with me at our headquarters before the big event. Jawbone Park is beautiful, our art cars have their own special spot, looking for the art car event that I've worked hard, blah, blah, blah. Thanks to discover the warm hospitality we've encountered everywhere we've been. The weekend promises to be fun, barbecue and vendors. And then you can see her next one. But she blogged every day about Buchanan, and I think that's a testament to, I mean, that's why we do what we do, is to bring people here to get a flavor of not just our barbecue event, but of our town and our community, and I think we accomplished that. They always ask you, and I put that in the first paragraph, how many people came, how many people came? Well, you don't know that because there's no way to do that unless you have a paid admission. Randy's going to encounter the same thing, Strawberry's the same thing. The three people that I spoke to directly were Petey, one of our big barbecue guy, when I say big, as in he's been with us every year and he keeps growing. He estimated there was no less than eight to 10,000 people. The guy with Inflalco said he was so packed and so busy on Friday, he could barely keep up. And he estimated the same thing. I talked to Matt Gregory, he thought, well, I don't think he was here Friday, but he said he thought there was no less than 5,000 in Jawbone area just on Saturday. So we're excited. The food vendors, I think, I know Randy was down there, most of them sold out, some of them sold out multiple times. The donut lady sent me a thing, said had I not sent my husband back to Bridgeport to get extra dough to make donuts, I'd have been sold out by four o'clock. South Texas barbecue who comes here, he had a big sold-out sign at 7:15 and I asked him how he was doing, smiling from ear to ear. I heard money jingling in there, I think. But he said, we sold out not once, not twice, but on the third time, I went back to my restaurant in Weston, shut it down, brought everything I could from the restaurant and we sold that out. So, thank you all for your support. I hope the city feels and the residents feel, they got their money's worth with the donation and the staff support, that meant the world to us. And, you know, we hope everyone's excited for next year. So thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you have, did you feel like you had good cooperation, not just from the city, but also our CBB and promoting the event? And I guess the other question is, some of these comments are extraordinary. I mean, I've been here for 41 years.
I'm glad you like a name, I really am.
The gal from Houston, I mean, that would be, if we could put that on a banner and wave it around.
It would probably be in our sponsor packets and things, yes.
You know, I mean, I'm just wondering if we couldn't like have the CBB put that on their website or even we could steal some of these quotes and put them on the city website and promote Buchanan for other.
That's a good idea, Dan. The lady from Houston, was she Queen Becky?
Queen Becky, Queen Becky with the furry car was from Houston also. She's actually originally from West Virginia. But this was from Jada, it's one of the first ones I spoke to, she had Dragonfly Wednesday. Big banana car was from Michigan. We had three, four, five others that wanted to come, but it's not, they didn't come for free. They're driving 1,200 miles one way from Houston, so we had to give them a stipend. Jerry and Vaxin was gracious and hosted them there at the hotel and we did some nice goodie bags. So we hope this will inspire some sponsorships for the future to help us bring more in, but I concur 100% with what you said. I wish I could say the CBB had been involved, but they don't. And I know they were in transition, but we were a little disappointed, there was nothing in the window, there was nothing that I saw on anything anywhere.
No, they did have their pig out.
Oh, did they?
The doors were open during the car show. I stopped in, there were a lot of people in there visiting. They had, they were handing out the information pamphlet.
Drop some, yep.
Yep, they were handing that out, they were telling people where to go, they were talking about the entertainment and what time it would start. So they were, they were, they were open all day Friday, all day Saturday, and I don't think they closed on Saturday until like about five, about five o'clock or so.
And again, I didn't follow them because I knew it was transitional, we had new people, new things, and we want to work with them earlier next year to do. And I will tell you that Laura Metis before her had, we had talked early, she was going to do rat cards and then we had so much in transition, we didn't do them. They had offered to do those, but I'm hoping that yes, people will see the benefit of the event, for lack of a better word, and I hope you folks are pleased, I saw several of you down there eating barbecue and having all that sauce and everything.
I thought Queen Becky.
Yes, they did.
I'll reiterate, I spent a lot of time at Jawbone Park for a couple of reasons. And, you know, one was to just, you know, again, absorb ideas for Wamsby. I spent a lot of time there during the Strawberry Festival for that purpose. And I thought, whatever y'all witnessed ran well, ran really, really well. The vendors, you're right, I spoke to a lot of the vendors, and this was probably one of the most successful, if not most successful events for vendors.
Oh, yeah.
They all, I mean, to the one, to every one of them, they all left and just said, you know, we couldn't ask for anything more. They weren't, you know, they weren't disappointed, you know, at all. And I didn't encounter anyone that was disappointed, I thought it was just a fantastic event, I'm glad the city.
Well, I think consistency is very important too. I mean, we have established that area as our event space. Everyone likes the vendor setup in the, around the semicircle. You know, even during Strawberry Festival, there was one in particular that I got to know pretty well from Spencer, Jojo's Tacos, and they loved it so much, they want to come back for Wamsby. But they're used to the black walnut festival and Spencer, they did what they do the entire festival and Spencer, they did in one day. And it wasn't even like the most beautiful day of the Strawberry Festival, they did in one day, and he had to keep going back and forth to Spencer to get more and more stuff. So the more that we establish that as our event space, the better it is. Our citizens and our visitors know exactly where to find everything, they know it's going to be in Jawbone Park, they know, they know where to park, they know where to find things, they know where the entertainment's going to be, and that's, that's really, as CJ, you know, you establish, create Buchanan a lot on the, on the, on the back of being consistent, having a weekly presence that met in the same place every single time to establish repetition, that, the more that we can have, establish repetition for our event space, the better.
And we did something last minute on the fly, we opened on Thursday from four to eight, and I think that's maybe when I saw CJ come, I was kidding about getting some barbecue. And I think we're going to do that, that it wasn't huge, we knew it wasn't going to be huge, but if the food vendors are here, why not bring them in, why not get people to stay another night, let those vendors make more money. But yeah, I read these things and even I was surprised, I mean, you know, we hope for about 5,000 people and I don't think we're being, if you guys have any other, yes, you do this Randy, if you have any other guest estimations and numbers, I just went by people who do this on a regular, consistent basis to get their feeling on attendance.
I agree, I agree, yeah. And I will say one other thing, I want to mention that we kind of, when we approve the use of everything, we never really direct the parking lot across from the post office. And when I realized that the parking lot across the post office is where the art car is, what it'd be, I knew what, and the mayor and I talked, I knew what people there would be about people needing to park there for the post office. I talked with Jody, it was a last-minute request that I made, and she went to work, rolled her sleeves up, and made it work. And I had a meeting with the postmaster just the other day, and she, although she's still wanting to, mailbox thing.
Is there revenue?
No, but she was very thankful that, she's, sometimes the events don't take into consideration how it affects our customers. No, that's not our parking lot. She said, I understand, that doesn't belong to the post office. But it does affect our customers. So thank you for hearing me.
I did not have them hit the mailbox on purpose.
Yeah.
Had another way to use it.
Thank you for hearing me on that. And also, I want to give a shout out to the Farmer's Market, because Jody and I worked together on that. In the Farmer's Market, we're very able to move and relocate over to safety complex.
We will have some logistics things for next year.
Sure.
Because we were really, really cramped down in that Jawbone Park area. The only one that was remotely upset was Pop's Furniture, because it just, it did, it turned into a campground. It was, we just, when we jammed all those in there, and we couldn't spread them out, and then we had the art cars up here. So we're already talking about logistical things and what we can do. And any other thing is that, as Robbie talked to our winner, they're very pleased with seeing all this 50 amp service and the water and the ground and the infrastructure there. Had it not rained, we had planned to have 10 teams, we're gonna be located on that center grass area, but we had to relocate them all that day. So it was, that was a little bit of a challenge. But it worked out. You get lemons, you make lemonade.
Well, as you know, and as council knows, we faced a few logistical issues with some property matters on the back end of our Madison Street redevelopment. And so next year, you know, that'll all be resolved, and we'll be able to have a fresh and completely finished area, which will help. You, Strawberry Festival, anything else that wants to be down there, it will help that, too.
I don't want to be remiss, and Robbie's been on our board for the last two or three years, he actually started as a sponsor. Deanna Grog was on our board, couldn't be here, Janet McCorkle is in Texas running a run with her job, and Jenny Barnett was in Clarksville. But, and Jerry, even though she's not a board member yet, she has really stepped up and been very involved. And like I said, she hosts all the art cars, she and Claudia from Mama Roma's, and we got more comments on the VIP dinner we did for our teams and judges. So it was a blending of a lot of people, a lot of work, a lot of help. I appreciate each of you. I've probably been most of the years and just can't thank you enough. And I hope you all are appreciative and look forward to next year.
We had several meetings, and those were good, to make sure everybody was on the same page. And I think, I think we, this was, this was very positive. So, thank you for everything. And Jerry, I think we all know her well enough, you're gonna break sooner rather than later, you're gonna be on that board, so.
And I will say one thing, you know, this is very positive, and thank you for that comment, they're 100% positive. I haven't found any negative. If you do, I want to see those, too, because that's how we improve. These are wonderful. I mean, I couldn't pay for those, if somebody said, geez, like.
I've not seen it, we've not heard it.
I haven't heard it.
We'll get calls at City Hall sometimes, even though it's not our event, they don't know where else to call with stuff. And sometimes they'll call with, you know, a negative, but we've gotten nothing. It's been, it's been really positive, so.
Yes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate you, too. I was down there, and I love that place where it said, our meat is, you don't even need.
You don't need teeth, you don't need.
Yeah, yeah.
Pete said this was the best event he's had since we began eight years, and the best two-day event financially he's had, period.
And, I would like to see next year, I don't know if you have, if you have the money or whatever, to get a few portable picnic tables to set up, maybe on the outskirts.
You have a bunch down the middle.
There was still, there was still a lot of people that's.
There's a lot of people there.
You know, a lot of older people.
Yeah, that's true.
So if we could come up a few.
We can do that.
There was also one thing I saw, I don't think a vendor should be allowed to rope off where the bench is. There was one place who had done that.
Roped off what?
They had done their tent and roped off the bench where people could get in there and sit on that bench.
Is that the one on Farin, I bet?
No, I think it was the middle, because I mentioned it to Randy, remember?
Yeah, I don't know if it was the paint pen, or there was somebody that looked right there just selling stuff.
Yeah. And they were not a food vendor.
Oh, oh, no.
They had rope off.
We can address those.
They had rope off where the bench was, which marked out the.
No, we can address.
It had a paint pen.
Seating for people, yeah.
I can't bear to be a kid.
It's the only thing I said, they're actually wonderful.
Jody, I think you found a new board member.
There you go.
I just wanted to make one quick comment, because with a lot of events, the question
arises, will it bring people from out of town? How far away will it bring them? I had the personal experience, I was in the office, these two couples come in. I'm a very subtle person, you know, had to just sit there. But I did approach them, and I welcomed them, and as we talked, I said, well, where are you from? One couple was from Iowa, the other couple was from Missouri. So I said, well, how did you find Buchanan, West Virginia? And she said, we came for this event. Now, you don't hear that with a little town, a big event, but a little town. And so I questioned her further to make certain. Ends up, I've got their email, I've written a story about them to circulate. But they decided to go on vacation, these two couples, they had a husband and a wife on the other team that were brother and sister. They had four choices. They had the Tetons, they had Branson, they had Nashville, and they had West Virginia. And as they started researching all the others, they got the West Virginia website. And down as far as they went, they saw a barbecue. So they started looking at the barbecue page, and she said, out of all the pages, it was the only one that had a complete list of everything that they had going on. And that made their decision. So they drove from, they come from Missouri, connected in Iowa, drove here, came down through, and came up from Beckley area, and decided that they would stop at every waterfall on the way to Buchanan. And then they stopped on waterfalls until they got to Clarksville.
Mark out a D.
Yes. So I did not believe them, but I talked to them long enough, and that is the only reason that they came to Buchanan. And they were very appreciative, and you'll read the story at some point, but they came for this one event.
That's great. And that sounds like they had a great experience.
Yeah, and it's good advertising. I mean, it all, it reaches to that level. You put your advertising out in the proper place, you'll get that far away.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tanner, you did not indicate yes or no, but you do have a request down here. Do you want to maybe just tell us a little bit about what your project is and what you're working on? And then to be respectful of your time, the council can go ahead and take your matter up for consideration?
Sure, did you want me to stand up there?
Please, yes, we do have, we do have a gentleman on record, so.
Yeah, this is my first city board meeting, so just.
All right, well, let's break the ice. Where are you from?
Missouri.
Oh, so you're from, so there you go.
Yeah, Kansas City, Missouri.
You came here for the barbecue?
Yeah. Warrensburg, Missouri, so it's where the phrase "a dog is man's best friend" came from.
Very cool.
I'm studying like an exchange program here, so I'm here for the summer, so I'm a recent college grad.
Okay.
Huge exchange program, so college students like me, like Missouri and Illinois, we come down to Clarksville and stay with local host families. And then all the WVU kids that are more in town actually go north. And during the summertime, I've done this job for seven summers, I could help families with education just by selling like educational books and apps to help kids get excited about learning, all the way up to like SAT prep.
Oh.
Yeah.
So you are, so I think some of you may have seen that there was a social media post with Sheriff Kaufman last week, I think. So Tanner, you are, you are asking us to grant you a door-to-door solicitor license to sell educational materials, is that correct? Do you want to tell us a little bit about what the materials include? What, are they books? Are they games?
So there's the books and apps, and websites that look together. So I brought samples back there, but basically it helps kids save time on school, so it condenses like all 60 subjects in just like four books. Helps kids write reports on papers, honors classes. Product with the Princeton reviews helps kids get higher SAT scores, help them get the Prom Scholarship here in West Virginia, because they need like at least a 1080 for that. And then for like early learning books, help kids learn how to read, like colors, numbers, shapes, sight word books, question and answer books, and they also co-link with apps on Google and App Store, too.
Cool. So now you say you're staying over in Clarksville. Did you just choose Buchanan to work in, or are you working in the whole region?
So I was assigned Lewis County and Upsher County.
Okay, gotcha, all right. Okay, do council members have any questions for Tanner?
This is the first time I've seen why they come to council.
Me, too.
Is there a reason why they come to council?
No, they come to council.
They do?
We just don't get them very often.
We don't get them very often. It's door-to-door vendors, because what we do since then.
It's gotta be approved by the city council under our word and struck as back to 1960s and then.
Tanner, what's the name of the company?
Southwestern Advantage. It's 160-year-old company based in Nashville, Tennessee. Yeah.
And what's your position?
So I'm kind of an organizational leader, so I'm in charge of about 50 college students. So I've been doing this since I was in college as an internship, and now I do it in the summertime.
He's earned the title "The Education Man." Tanner, the Education Man, now.
Nappy.
Nappy, nappy.
And where are you living?
I live with, now I kind of live in Chicago, but I kind of stay with the host family in Clarksville. More specifically, I think you guys know where the Harries and the CVS is down East Main Street. There's a, there's a side road called South Maple, I know, South Maple Avenue, it's kind of like where the Callstone Road is. So I stay with an alumni named Kathy Curry. So she did this job back in college, back in the 80s, so now I stay with her for the summer.
I know that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Make a difference.
Yeah.
Include Dave Thomas.
Yes. So it's kind of like right on the corner, so you know, you have like the main road and kind of go right up on somewhere, right behind Clay Street. You know, it's kind of like the second house down on the western side.
Yeah, I make the avenue with all the huge, and the bricks are all.
I grew up.
Sorry.
Will he be carrying something, so he has approval from sitting in all that?
Yes. All right, we have a motion on the table for Mr. Sanders to approve the door-to-door solicitors' licenses. Is there a second to that effect?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCauley, is there any further discussion on the matter? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll give you Dave Thomas's address, so you can.
I got a couple addresses.
Particularly interested in children's books on tape.
I read 13 hours of it.
Nice.
But I have audio.
And if you need a late-night call, he doesn't sleep either, so you could just, you know, if you're a little low on your quota for the day.
I'll come to your house.
11:00, 12:00, he's there.
Sorry, I'm an F camera.
There's never any lights in the house either.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck to you.
Take care.
All right, so G1 has been split. All right, Ambi, it's your turn. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy fiscal year. Okay, we'll give you balances for the month of June. It's our end of our fiscal year. And then I'll tell you some news at the budget revision. I hope for better news. Okay, general fund money market and checking, you ended up with 623,899 in money market and checking, and the CD was 86,550 for a total of 710,450. Storkland Mark's 3,028, Stalker Youth Center Capital Campaign, 440,000, with $12,000 pledge, 452. Coal Tax, 32,016. Municipal Stabilization, 918,736. Flood Control Account, 78,313. Consolidated Public Works, 126,909. Cemetery CD, 235,332. Sales Tax, 1,059,819. And the American Rescue Plan Act, 1,883,700. And the things I'll report on in this report is seating, as you, most of you should know, the seating's been installed in the theater balcony seat area, and it looks very nice. If you haven't had the chance to see it, we can take you up to look at it anytime you want. Art 26201 held their final competition, the Lyre's Contest in June. Bill Leff, who's the, was a guest performer, is quite well-known in West Virginia, and he did a performance. Approximately 70 people attended that. This Friday, for everyone's information, the Vintage Theater Group, Rustic Mechanicals, will perform the Comedy of Errors, it's like a Shakespeare performance. Student tickets for anybody that's out there listening, there are free student tickets still available, so if anyone would want to bring their students, those tickets are, just let us know, call City Hall. The Rotary's sponsoring that event, too, by the way. Okay, for the Stalker Youth Center building application status, the application's been submitted to the USDA. Stacy Karikoff actually wanted to talk with Jay and I today, and we talked to her earlier. She needed a few more details about our finances and our expenses, and we're getting ready to gather that for it, just a few things, but a little more detail. I'll remind everybody, council, we need to have a public meeting. We thought August would be best for that, and if that's okay with council, we can start sending emails out to when you want to hold that meeting. I don't, I don't know if you want to hold a council meeting, or if you just want it separately, probably separately.
We could get bogged down in weeds, so I would say separate.
Okay. We'll get that started and start sending out emails. And then as far as the RE grant, property demolition, the demo on those two properties, those two problem properties, one on Ambrose and one on, none of those that are going to start next week. And that's all I have for this report, other than the revision that's required by code later in the agenda.
While Ambi's up, I'd like to ask council if we can go ahead and take a look at G2 and G3. But before we do that, are there any questions or comments for Ambi relative to her report? Okay. If you'll indulge, let's go ahead and talk about our budget revisions. And Ambi, whichever one you want to start with first.
Oh, G2 is coal tax, so I'll just start with that one. We anticipate, and I always underestimate that one for sure, anticipated the balance on hand to be $1,000. We ended that with 32, 33,817. So we add that 32,817 to that budget, and thereby we increased the street budget from 16,000 to 48,818. So that's a simple one. They'll probably ask me why we had so much, and that's usually because we want to extend that on paving for street projects if we can. But that won't be a big deal.
It's G2, right?
G2.
Yes.
That's coal tax. If you want to approve.
Make a way to approve.
Second.
All right, there is a motion on the table by Mr. Sanders, there is a second by Mr. Rylands. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor of approving Resolution 23, 2223-07 for the coal tax budget revision, number one in the fiscal year 2324, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. That motion is carried, and I will defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rylands?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, vote yes. Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, down to G3.
Okay, this is your general fund budget revision one. And again, these are both by code, we have to get these revised in July, especially since we don't have a meeting in the middle of July, I have to do budget. Well, we had hoped to end the year with 750,000, and I just reported we ended with 710,000, so I have to cut a budget somewhere temporarily. And I'm going to say temporarily because we were expecting some funds in, from our theme generator grants. We actually have still got a request from March that hasn't been submitted to us. And we know we're going to get it, but the total of those two requests, RE request, actually, is about 298,000. actually, is about 298,000 that we haven't received in the last fiscal year. So I'll revise the budget again once I receive these, those incomes in. But for the meantime, I have to go by code, and so I'm going to have to cut the budget. So we fell short 39,550. Of course, I had to increase down the assigned fund balance for that. And then down in your expenditures, I just used that street department highway, streets and highways projects. It was budgeted at 1,668,576, so I cut it by 39,550, which was what we were short on. I will replenish that when we get our funds in from those grants. The other thing we rolled over into this year was a state grant from the National Endowment of the Arts, and that was for a grant that the city's facilitating for Wamsby. The city is not putting money into this, but we are facilitating the grant for them. It's a 50/50 grant, $20,000 grant. Wamsby's actually contributing $10,000, and then the grant funds will pay $10,000. So it's a $20,000 grant, and we know we're going to have expenses here in the first part of July for that, so I'm going to go ahead and get that taken care of. So it's a very small budget revision. I will be back once we see some income coming in, change the budget for other things.
Just want to make sure we clarify for media president and those in the audience, we are, the city is not, did not see a shortfall. We were only just off a little bit in our estimation from back in February for where we would be 7-1 for our revenues to begin the new fiscal year. So please, nobody be alarmed, we're not short. We did not have a budget shortfall. We are, we are fine. So just want to make sure we.
We had a lot of projects. We had a lot of things going on, lots of money going out. It was kind of like a perfect storm. We had grants that weren't getting received, we had lots of projects going on. The departments were paying for things that they wanted to get in before the end of the year, so that kind of all fell together.
Right.
And would we approve the general fund budget revision number one?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Rylands, a second by Mr. McCauley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes are opposed. Motion appears to be carried unanimously. It is again a resolution, and I will defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call.
Was that Mr. McCauley? Let me just second.
Yes.
All right, and I will, I'm gonna, I would abstain if it was a positive effect for Wamsby, but this is a wash. Or go ahead and go.
J. David Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rylands?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, vote yes. Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ambi.
Thank you.
As we always do, we need to certainly thank Ambi and Barb and everyone who works in City Hall. This end of June, 1st of July is a very busy time of year for our, those who work the calculators and the pens, and make sure that we have some money to begin the new year. So I know that Ambi, Ambi probably put in, I don't know that Ambi went home last week and maybe not over the weekend. I drove by a few times and she was here, so.
160 hours worked in two weeks.
There you go, 160 hours worked in two weeks. So thank you very much for all the work that you did on our, on our budget.
She's lagging off a little.
She is.
80 hours a week.
Yep. So, okay. As we saw, Chief Campbell is not here, but Captain Elmore, they are on a call on a tractor rollover out the country, so take positive thoughts for that individual. That's where Captain Elmore had to head to. So we will go to Mr. Tom O'Neill, City Attorney, who has a brief report for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to update the council, I've been in touch with Wesleyan's attorney on the property exchange, and we're working together to finalize the closing. He asked for some additional time, but I'm, I expect that we'll be getting this done this month. Also, we've got a couple of legal matters that we're dealing with for the city that we have some hearings later this month, and as those develop further, we'll report some more, but we're keeping busy and happy to take any questions from members of the council.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Before we head down to correspondence and information, want to make sure that we recognize we have our librarian here, Catherine. Kathy, nice to see you this evening. And then we also have, who's no stranger to us, Rhett Yousenberry, who represents Congressman Alex Mooney. Thank you for being here this evening. Do you have anything that you wish to address us on, or?
Well, just the usual greetings from Congressman Mooney, and also that since this was your last meeting, I wanted to be sure to be here with Wamsby on the horizon, just about to land, just to make sure that y'all are aware that we're still here in case there's something that we can do.
We appreciate Congressman's support of Wamsby and yours, and so thank you for being here.
I can't wait to see it. Thank you, Rhett.
All right, down to correspondence and information. We mentioned this earlier in the meeting, but we have a notification that City Council meeting dated for Thursday, July 20, 2023, it is canceled due to the scheduling conflicts with Wamsby. We have a notice of public hearing proposed for ordinance 464, and that is to renew the cable franchise with Sequel Communications, DVA Optimum. That is slated for Thursday, August 3, at 7:00 PM. We have a regularly scheduled City Council meeting that night, so it will be at the very beginning of our City Council meeting, as we always hold our public hearings during that time. We've got the report of the dog and cat activity from the Upshire County Commission for May. We have a few FOIA requests from Steep Steel leases and licenses for cell towers and wireless installation on city-owned property, Smart Procure for PO and vendor information from March 8 to current, James D. relative to body cam and dash cam footage relative to DUI cases from 9/12 of 20, and then a request from Peyton Frontenot, a case arrest report from 2018. Those are all FOIA requests. Upshire County Schools letter of support for Morton Avenue and North Locust Street sidewalk and lighting project and Poundstone Riverwalk Trail Extension Number 3 construction. And then we have the West Virginia Economic Development statewide broadband survey. That link is listed. I hope several have had an opportunity to fill out that survey relative to broadband service in, here in Appalachia. Down to the consent agenda, we have the approval of our minutes from the meeting. Five, we do not have those? Okay, G615 either?
No.
Okay. A white, approval of building and wiring permits, I just read. And then approval of payment of bills. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda F2 and F3? If a motion by CJ, a second by Jack, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes are opposed. Motion carries. Now we're down to strategic issues for discussion and or vote. We have dispensed with G1, G2, and G3. We are down to G4. This is the second reading of the approval of ordinance 464, the franchise renewal, and that is officially labeled as Sequel 3, Roman numeral 3, Communications 2, Roman numeral 2, LLC, DVA Optimum for the construction and operation of the cable system. And again, this is on second reading. Let me go back over here, and I will read this, what appears to be the caption, and that is ordinance 464, an ordinance of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, renewing the franchise granted to Sequel 3 Communications 2 LLC for the construction and operation of a cable system. Is there any, is, well, first, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve this on second reading. Is there a motion? All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. Is there any discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor of.
Could I offer a couple of comments?
Sure.
As part of discussion, I have some scripted points I'd just like for the entire council to observe. This proposed franchise agreement has not had any legal review by anyone on behalf of the City of Buchanan. Our city attorney is an employee for Altice that owns Sudden Lake/Optimum. At the very least, our council should table consideration of this agreement and ordinance until it's been properly reviewed by a legal representative working for our city. Second, the City Council has not had the opportunity to see the recently administered survey. What was the point of that survey if the governing body, with the exception of the mayor, does not have access to that data? Did 50% or more of our citizenry actually voice their displeasure with Sudden Lake? I'd like to look at that data. Three, just last year, in 2022, the West Virginia Public Service Commission cited Sudden Lake Altice for quote-unquote egregious conduct. More specifically, PSC Chair Charlotte Lane found, quote, "Sudden Lake's conduct and performance with respect to its operations in West Virginia have been nothing short of egregious." PSC Chairman Charlotte Lane further said in the statement, "There is no excuse for its conduct except to increase its bottom line, doing so with a blatant disregard for its subscribers. Sudden Lake should be penalized for its actions. The $2.2 million fine by our State Public Service Commission may be the largest fine ever imposed by the PSC against any publicly regulated or monitored utility in state history." Quote, further quote, "Lane met with Sudden Lake representatives in 2021 about more than 1,900 complaints the agency received about the company's service. Among the complaints were service restoration delays, billing errors, customers being unable to place orders for service, or contact workers over their service status." Fourth, as part of its strategy to stifle the state's more than year-long investigation into Sudden Lake Altice's egregious conduct, the company sought to muzzle various employees who subsequently were subpoenaed by the PSC as part of the state investigation, including our own regional manager, Peter Brown. His subpoena is on line dated September 21, 2021, who was earlier discharged by the company. Employees with severance packages were subjected to loss of benefits if they spoke out about the company's misbehavior. Fifth, in the year following the investigation, with the scathing state findings and the multimillion-dollar fine imposition, Sudden Lake rebranded itself as Optimum, but it is still owned and operated by Altice. According to Wikipedia, I just pasted this today, Altice Europe NV, commonly known as Altice, is a French multinational telecommunications and mass media company with official headquarters in the Netherlands, founded and headed by the French Israeli billionaire businessman, Patrick Drehi, and the second-largest telecommunications company in France behind Orange. It had a market capitalization of 13.7 billion pounds in December 2017, and a market cap of less than 6 billion in June of 2019, and 80% decline for the stock since Drehi financed the business with debt. In 2016, the company had over 50 million internet, TV, and phone subscribers in Western Europe, Israel, the United States where it operates, and the Caribbean. Altice formerly owned a subsidiary in the USA until that company, while retaining the Altice name, was spun off through an IPO in June of 2019, making the former USA division independent from the rest of Altice, but retaining the same chairman, Patrick Drehi, and the same logo. Six, Optimum Altice's current proposal seeks a 10-year franchise renewal. The more recent franchise renewals by Buchanan were for five to seven years. Is it prudent to give even a longer franchise term to Optimum/Sudden Lake/Altice, given their recent egregious conduct? Seven, with respect to Buchanan's Channel 3, peg channels are not mandated by federal law. Rather, they are a right given to the franchising authority here in the city, which it may choose to exercise. If the franchising authority does not require peg channels, that requirement must be set out in the franchise agreement between the franchising authority and the cable operator. In accordance with applicable franchise agreements, local franchising authorities or cable operators may adopt on their own non-content-based rules governing the use of peg channels. For example, rules may be adopted for allocating time among competing applicants on a reasonable basis, minimum production standards may be required, or users may be required to undergo training. I urge my fellow members of the City Council to at least table this matter until we can look at it more substantially, so that all of us can evaluate the data generated from the survey, so that we can actually have a legal review of the proposed ordinance. It's not appropriate for me, just because I'm a lawyer, to be looking at this and certifying the city anything about it. I urge us to slow this down so that we can more further study the entire matter. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, I will, I will respond to your point about the survey. So the Cable Board members did review the survey. Those meetings are, of course, open to the public, as anyone can attend those meetings. And a big reason for the Cable Board is to specifically handle all of the business, all of that kind of, the nuts and bolts, if you will, of the cable system. So when it got to council, we just provided the 30,000-foot view of what the survey, what the survey set. With respect to the other points in the, in Mr. McCauley's prepared remarks, Clark, do you want to respond? Or I don't, I don't, I don't know how we want to, I don't know if you have answers?
You ask a politician if he wants to say anything. Well, certainly, Councilman McCauley, I can't debate anything that you brought up. We would assume that your information is correct, particularly financial information, that's public knowledge of what has happened. However, I would, I would, I would say this in regards to some of the comments that were made last, in the last meeting, and furthering your comments, Councilman. The Optimum does take customer service very seriously, and we're investing millions in improving our customer experience, including the ongoing installation, fiber connectivity across the service area, and the addition of a West Virginia-based call center located in Tayside Valley. It's all happened since the episode that you're referring to. And once again, all the performance indicators are showing significant improvement over the past two years. We're determined to resolve every issue of which we are made aware. Now, of the hundreds and possibly thousands of complaints that the PSC handled, I did, I believe, last week, or maybe to the Cable Board, make you aware that as of the first of last month, when I checked, there was only one complaint against Optimum this year, and that was, that was on a right-of-way matter. It was, had nothing to do with the service. So yes, Chairman Lane made some very strong statements, and she was worthy of making those statements. Many of you, probably most of you, as I have been Sudden Lake customers in the past. I think that most of us could say that things have changed, things have vastly improved. When I have, I would never discourage you from obtaining a council to review the contract. Certainly, as an attorney, you've taken a look at it. This agreement is made in layman's terms. There's no legalese in it, there is no fine print in the agreement. I've personally been involved in 15 closings with cities, towns, and counties since the end of March this year. This is exactly the same agreement that we have used in all 15 of those situations. Some of the towns have not vetted it legally, others have had it very sincerely. Matter of fact, week before last, I sat down with the attorney representing Wes Milford, and we actually not just went through this agreement page by page or paragraph by paragraph, we went through this word by word. And as a result of that, I was able to forward some changes and some corrections that had nothing to do with the substance of the agreement, but only capitalization, punctuation, and a referral in one paragraph that referred to another paragraph wrong. I forwarded a copy.
I forwarded a copy of it, corrected it, to, to Ambie, for your review. I think possibly you have seen those corrections, and things certainly are moving ahead. I will, I will say one more thing here, and when I was dealing with the city of Williamson, the attorney that represented Williamson was also the attorney who made one of the complaints that actually generated the result of the fine. And that attorney certainly had very, very good reason to look over the contract, to the agreement, and he wholeheartedly recommended to the council of Williamson that they approve that agreement. And just one other thing, Charlotte Lane gave us a slap in the face, and it resulted in a $2.2 million fine. But recently, Chairman Lane gave us a pat on the back, and publicly made the comment that things have vastly improved. So I'd ask your consideration, and certainly knowing what we know now, and the improvements that have been made in, in billing, in maintenance, and investment, the millions of investment that we're making, that you still consider moving ahead with this. And also, Mayor, remember that there is a drop-dead date on the, on the $5,000 grant for Channel 3.
Correct.
Which, if it is delayed, then you certainly would have to go back to negotiating that.
Right.
Unless you have questions further than that?
Thank you, Senator Barnes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing the need for none, I will go ahead and call to the question that the motion and second have been had. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed.
Aye.
So the ayes have it. Pam, yes. Jack, yes. Randy, yes. Dave Thomas, yes. Mayor, yes. Noes, CJ, and Dave McCauley. Is that, does that represent correctly?
Yes.
Okay. For the minutes' sake, that's, that's what, that's what we have. All right. Thank you all very much. And again, Senator Barnes, thank you for being here with us again this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. For our, as we promised earlier in the meeting, when we came back from executive session, we discussed a few property matters. Coming out of executive session, I would ask that we table G5 discussion, possible action with the Upshur County Commission requesting assistance with demolition of three structures along Chancery and South Locust Streets until we have an opportunity to, to meet with them.
Sure.
We have a motion by Mr. McCauley. We have a second, and we'll give it to Jack, if that's okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Let me get my glass of water here. I have to read your book. It is that time of year where we talk about our city appointments. I do believe that you all were emailed this, this afternoon. I will go ahead and tell you, there are very, very few changes on this, because a lot of the work was done throughout the year. As you recall, we established the Parks and Recreation Board. It makes no sense to make any changes there. Those folks have been working very well together. We established, we reestablished our cable board. Those folks worked very well together, and we're in the middle of, of this negotiation with Altice, or with Optimum, so doesn't make sense to change that. And then we also assembled, reassembled our, our building, our building commission, thank you, for this year, for the work that they're working on with Stockard Youth and Community Center, so it doesn't make any sense to change that. So, going down through the list here, I'll quickly read these. The city of Buchanan appointments for fiscal year 2023, 2024 are as follows. Assistant City Recorder, Ambie Jenkins. Director of Finance Administration, Ambie Jenkins. Director of Public Works, Jerry Arnold. Addressing Officer, Jerry Arnold. Chief of City Police, Matt Gregory. Chief of City Fire Department, J.B. Kimball. City Engineer, Jay Holland. Building Code and Enforcement Officer, Vincent Smith. City Attorney, Tom O'Neill. City Horticulturalist, Dixie Green. Municipal Court Judge, Helen Eckert. City Electrical Inspector, Vincent Smith. Section 504 Compliance Officer, which just comes down to ADA, Brad Hawkins. SYCC Director, Deborah Brockelman. Flood Plane Manager and CRS Community Coordinator, Jay Holland. Information Coordinator, Randy Sanders. Grant Writer, Region 7. The City HRM, which would be Human Resources, that would be Ambie Jenkins. Water Department Superintendent, Kelly Arnold. Waste Department Superintendent, Jerry Arnold. Sanitary Department Superintendent, Ethan Croston. Street Department and Park Superintendent, Brad Hawkins. Assistant Street Supervisor, Andrew Loudon. Down to the boards, we have, if it's okay with you all, if you want to, I can do this one of two ways. We can, we can approve every single section, or I can approve it by page, or we can approve it all at the end. All at the end. All at the end. Okay. Water Board. As Mayor, I serve as the Chair, and as Term of Office. Then it goes Don Nestor, 21 to 24. Erasmus Rizzo, 23 to 26. David McCauley, Council, Term of Office. David Thomas, Term of, is Council, Term of Office. And City Recorder is a, is a non-voting member, but serves his Term of Office. Waste Board. Mayor is the Chair, and that's Term of Office. Scott Randall, 23 to 26. CJ Rylands, Council, Term of Office. City Recorder is Term of Office and is non-voting. Sanitary Board. Mayor is the Chair, and that's Term of Office. Mitchell Shaw is the unexpired term of Gene Fry, and that goes from 21 to 24. Phil Loftus is 23 to 26, and City Recorder is Term of Office, also non-voting. Consolidated Public Works Board. Mayor is the Chair. City Recorder is Term of Office, but non-voting. Pamela Bucklew is Council, Term of Office. Jack Rigger is Council, Term of Office. Nancy Shove, 23 to 25. Mark Waldo, 22 to 24. All right. Stockard Youth and Community Center Board. Mayor is the Chair, Term of Office. City Recorder is Term of Office. He is a voting member on the Stockard Youth Board. Pamela Bucklew is Council. Tammy Samples is Board of Education. Sam Nolte is the Upshur County Commission. Melissa Frank is West Virginia Westland College. Nancy Shove is at-large. That is, and, and there are, there's only one here. Don Nester is at-large, 23 to 25, is the renewal, and Pam Martin, 22 to 24. Police Civil Service Commission. We have, these are, these next two are party-affiliated. We have to have a, a similar number of left, right, or middle. So we have Carl Collinich is, is put forth by the Chamber of Commerce. He is Libertarian. Gary Henderson is from the FOP, Registered Republican. Mark Spencer is Registered Republican, is City. And then City Recorder is Term of Office, non-voting. So all of those are 22, 22 to 26, with the, with the exception of Mark Spencer, 20 to 24. Fire Civil Service Commission, again, this is party-affiliated. We have Lenora Wentz, Chamber, Republican. Robert Parker, Fire Department, is independent. Abigail Benjamin is City, Registered Republican, and City Recorder is Term of Office, non-voting. The only one that we have to renew there is Bob Parker. Zoning Board of Appeals is a three-year term, and that is Natalie Viola, Timothy Reese, Jenny Duran, Dean Everett, and Corey Rozell. The only one we have to renew is Jenny Duran. Historic Landmarks Commission. We also, we, we added a few folks to this board last year. We have Vincent Smith as the Chair, as the Building Code Enforcement Officer. Jack Rigger is the Council Member, Term of Office. Erica Collinich, 23 to 25, renewal. Anthony Valentino, 22 to 24. Diane Corley, 22 to 24, and Noel Tenney, non-voting, from the Historical Society. Housing Enforcement Board. Mayor is the Chair, and that is Term of Office, and it is a voting member. Jay Holland is City Engineer, voting member. Dave Thomas, Council, Term of Office, at-large, voting member. Susie McKissick is the Health Officer. She is a non-voting member. Vincent Smith is the Building Code Enforcement Officer, non-voting member, and J.B. Kimball is Chief of City Fire Department, non-voting member. Dilapidated Structural Structures Scoring System Committee, this committee was built last year. Vincent Smith, Code Enforcement Officer. Tanner Smith, Buchanan City Fire Department, no relation. Jerry Wamsley, Upshur County Safe Sites and Structures. Michael Ward, County Resident, and Rob Smith, County Resident. It made sense to have non-city residents on that one, so that they could be most impartial. All right. Planning Commission. We have Sarah Elstock, 22 to 25. Tom Lynch, from the resigned Sarah St. Clair term, 22 to 25. Steve Nanners, brand-new, 23 to 26. Kelly Tierney, 23 to 26, renewal. Jenny Burnside, I think it's Croaf, Croaf. She replaced Rich Clemens, 21 to 24. Curtis Wilkerson, 21 to 24. Susan Aloy, 21 to 24, and is the current Chair. Vincent Smith, zoning officer, is the, is also a voting member. CJ Rylands is Council Member, and is Term of Office. And City Recorder is a non-voting member, and that is Term of Office. Animal Care and Control Commission. Mayor is the Chair. We have a representative from the Upshur Lewis Animal Control Facility, that is Lisa Linger. Upshur County Resident, Allison Clausen, white hair. Upshur County Resident, Robin Keough. Upshur County Resident, Lisa Critchfield. And, and then we also have Upshur County Veterinarian, Tanya Pickens. We have the DNR, has an ex officio, non-voting membership. We have the Upshur County Dog Warden, has a non-voting membership. City Recorder has a non-voting membership. City Attorney and Animal Shelter both have non-voting memberships to that board. Colonial Arts Center Board. We have Randy Sanders, City of Buchanan Representative. We have Lisa Lively, former member of R26201, and a representative from WVWC. Keith Buchanan, BCT Past Executive Producer. Eric Collinich, BCT Past Executive Producer. And John Walz, R26201 and BCT Executive Producer. Charles W. Gibson Library Board. We have Brooke Scott, to expire in '27. Brett Miller, to expire in '24, brand-new. Alice Teetz, welcome aboard. She will take Butch Rainey's expiring term, and Butch did not want to renew, so Alice will be on until '28. Kelly Tierney to '25, and Beth Post is to '26. The Region Planning and Development is Mayor, and that's Term of Office. Upshur County Recreation Board, this is different from our Upshur, from our City of Buchanan Parks and Recreation Board. We have two positions on that board. For city appointments, we have Brandon Williams, 23 to 25, and, and replacing Hannah Lively will be Brian Webb, 23 to 25. Upshur County Development Authority Board of Directors and Executive Committee is Dave Thomas from the City Council. We have the Upshur County Board of Health. We have Susie Talbot, who is a renewal from 23 to 28, and Dr. John Mathias, who is, is serving in the unexpired term of Larry Carpenter. Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have Randy Sanders as the Council Representative, and Jenny Fluke, who is a business owner here in downtown and in the hospitality industry. Burma is Pam Bucklew. Airport Authority, Mike Ruffing is a city appointment. Brian Huffman and Jay, and Jay Holland are both, are both also city appointments. We get three for that board. It's 21 to 24, 22 to 25, and 22 to 25. Housing Authority. This is Jerry Wilfong, Jody Light, Kitten Lee, Michael Livisay, and Catherine Fry. The only one that we are renewing, and that was of the request of the Housing, of the Housing Authority, is Jerry Wilfong, 23 to 28. Jody Light serves until '27. Kitten Lee until '24. Mike Livisay until '25, and Catherine Fry until '26. Cable Board, that was just established this, or reestablished this year. Peggy Ball to '25. Joey Slaughter to '24. James Trivallett, 20 to 25. City Recorder is not, is a voting member. Congratulations. Term of Office. The Mayor is the Chair, and that's Term of Office, and the City Attorney is a non-voting member. Municipal Building Commission. Again, this was established last year. This is also party, party-affiliated and required. We have Jane Godwin, Registered Republican, to '27. Danny Williams, Registered Republican, 27. Justin Dines, an independent, until '27. Erica Byrd, Registered Democrat, to '27. And Kelly Queen, Registered Democrat, until '27. The Armory Managerial Committee is the Director of Finance and Administration, Ambie Jenkins. City, or Chamber of Commerce Representative is City Recorder, Randy Sanders. I would ask that we put the UC, the Upshur County Senior Citizens Opportunity Board on hold. As you recall, we're still working on with, with them, to find out what's kind of going on with the Governor's Office, and also to find out some clarification with their bylaws, if it has, if they want somebody from here on the bench, or can we put somebody in who just lives within the corporate limits. So I'd like to ask that we put that one on hold, and maybe we can do that at the same time when we make the decision whether or not to assist them with funding. Council Committees. Finance is all council members. Ordinance is all council members. Health is the Mayor, Council Member, and Dave Thomas. Fire is all members of council. Police is all members of council, and Audit is appointed by, at each audit time. Okay, we're almost done, I promise. General Fund Revenue and Expense Review Committee is myself as Mayor, as Chair, Councilman Jack Rigger, Councilman Dave Thomas, Ambie Jenkins, Barb Hinkle, and Scott Randall. That way, we have all of our enterprise boards represented as well. The Kalia Police Review Committee is Police Chief Matt Gregory, Doug Loudon, and then Chief J.B. Kimball with the City Fire Department, the Mayor, Councilman CJ Rylands, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, City Attorney, and Randy Sanders. The CFIA Policy Review Committee, this is on the fire side of accreditation. We have Matt Gregory, Chief Kimball, the Mayor, Council Member, CJ Rylands, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, City Attorney, Joey Backsa, Upshur County Commissioner, Sam Nolte, and Randy Sanders. The Technology Committee is Jay Holland, Jerry Arnold, Ambie Jenkins, Phil Loftus, Duane Squires, Seth Hoffman, Randy Sanders, and Emile Butcher will replace Rich Clemens, who no longer lives with, here in Buchanan. Buchanan Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, this is a, this is a board of seven. It has Council Seat, Pamela Bucklew, Scott Lampenon, John Bowman, Alexis Ross, Butcher, Brian Webb, Rob Kimball, and Debbie Shapiro. The two subcommittees include the Facilities Management Committee, Rob, Robert Osborne, Chip Allen, Lisa Tenney, Keely Burnside, and Will Squires. The programming portion of that includes Beth Post, Rachel Ruffing, Jenna Failey, Levi Bender, and Graham Godwin. Other committees and appointments. Buchanan River Watershed Association, Ethan Croston. Buchanan Dog Park Committee is Lisa Critchfield, Brooke Scott, Brad Hawkins, Jerry Arnold, Lisa Linger, Robin Keough, Allison Clausen, white hair, and Jenny Dixon. The SYCC Capital Steering Campaign is David McCauley. And then the Downtown Seasonal Decoration Committee is Pam Bucklew, Amanda Hayes, Nancy Shove, Deborah Brockelman, and Jerry Arnold. You may admit, we're a piece of rubber. Okay. Now, now the test, everybody needs to regurgitate that, starting with Dave Thomas. So as you will see, there's really very, very, very few changes on here. Asked a lot of people to, to renew with this because they, they've done good work. I think we've got good teams in place. So the only, only ones that were, when we went, when I went around and asked is those who said, no, I really don't want to continue, and so we filled with other, other proposals. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
This Dilapidated Structure Scoring System, what kind of system do they use for scoring?
So we got, we plagiarized from the City of Oak Hill. The City of Oak Hill had a great scoring system. It was to help kind of categorize structures, homes in, in the city that, and I, and don't, don't ask me to quote the exact rating scale, but basically goes from real bad to, to okay. And so that committee works with the Housing Enforcement Board, and has, has met already to score a few different houses in the community, just to kind of bring it back to the Housing Enforcement Board to help. It just adds another layer of eyes on structures as to whether or not they are, they're, they're in good working order, or do we need to make some suggestions on improvement?
Well, what do you do if they don't? I'm thinking of two in particular.
Well, that, that goes back to what our ordinances allow us to do. The state, the state of West Virginia does not allow us to, one, take anybody's property, or two, force the hand that they, that they have to update or, or improve their property to a certain standard. We, we, our teeth are not, they're not that strong. Where they can help is where they, we do have standards about the, the length of grass. We do have standards on, you know, the broken windows and siding falling off and roads caving in. But at the end of the day, it, it is up to the homeowner, because we do not own the, the homes in Buchanan. It's up to the homeowner to be able to afford the updates and improvements that need to be made on the houses. We can make suggestions, and if, or we have a finding mechanism. We can find them. We have imposed fines before. We have imposed... We have imposed liens on property before. So when it's sold, it can't be sold until the liens are satisfied, if a property is deemed to be dilapidated. The scoring committee helps with adding, like I said, additional eyes, so that it just, when it comes back to the Housing Enforcement Board, it's vetted through more than just us sitting on the board, and more than just vets. And again, when we built that, it made sense to include county residents, not city residents, because we didn't want anybody who might, their house might be pinpointed, or a piece of property might be pinpointed, or their neighbor might be pinpointed. So we didn't want it to become political. So that's, so if you live in the county, you kind of, you have a perspective that, you know, you don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak.
Okay, thanks.
At this time, if there's no other questions or comments, I would ask that the council approve the City of Buchanan appointments for fiscal year 2023, 2024. As I read you, is there a motion to that effect?
No motion.
Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed.
No.
Okay.
I agree with 99.5% of your, but there's two folks that I'm frankly surprised. We've had conversations over the past 12, 13 months since I've been back on City Council about one appointment in particular. And I thought at the most recent meeting in April or May, when we had an executive session, that it was seven, nothing, that it was an absolutely unanimous decision to not renew one of the city officials. But since we're doing it with all 200 names, I've got to vote no because of two people.
Okay. So we have everybody voting yes, except for Mr. McCauley. Okay. All right.
I will say one thing. I think I know what Dave's talking about.
We need to be careful. We talk about personnel, we need to be careful.
Yeah, I'm not going to say anything specific. But I do think we need to be very diligent in regard to making sure that individuals that are appointed are fulfilling their role and responsibility. And that we all had the conversation four or five months ago. I understand where you're coming from, Dave. But I do think we need to be diligent in making sure that we hold people's feet to the fire. And I will do that. I voted yes, because I think it'll be an opportunity for us to pursue the right thing in the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, finally, on the docket this evening, also relative to executive session this evening. This, we had a presentation, as you recall, as I thought it was last year. Pam, I think Pam's right, I think it was two years ago. To swap two very small pieces of property in the Ambrose Lemon Street area, as well as on the Beach Street area for Daniel Williams. Danny would like to square off his property on the Beach Street side while giving us a portion below his house that actually includes the corner of Ambrose Street, and, or not Ambrose, Leonard Street and Lemon Street. So I think, I'd like us to own our own street, that whole piece of the corner anyway. So there's a jet out on Danny's that kind of makes it difficult for Danny to square off his property. And then there's a piece that makes it difficult for him that we can take over. So the discussion we had in executive session was just to basically give a refresh to the council, to the matter at hand. I'd ask that we approve this property swap, understanding that we will have to do a survey, which we will discuss with Mr. Williams, and we'll have to do an ordinance to the effect as well. Is there a motion that we conceptually approve the property swap between Danny Williams and the City of Buchanan?
And we're splitting the survey clause.
Well, we have to.
Then we'll have a discussion.
We have to discuss it with him. Yeah, okay. We have a motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders, is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I will call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed?
Aye.
You vote no?
Correct.
Okay. So let the minutes reflect that council votes in favor of this, with the exception of Mr. Rylance. Okay. We are down to council comments and announcements, and we will begin on the left-hand side of the table with Pamela Buckle.
Well, glad to see we got the corner of West Moon and Florida Street, that sidewalk there. That's really good.
Us too.
Down there, yeah. Won't be dangerous anymore. And where the city did some sewer work down on East Main, across from Ralph's in the area. That road needs to be fixed before Wamisbee.
That's in the plans.
Okay, that's something. And also, just gonna, everybody needs to be very respectful and welcoming to all the people that's coming to this city. You know, treat them the way you'd want to be treated if you went to their country. And just have a good time, and be neighborly to everybody, and be respectful.
Thank you.
And I'm really looking forward to that, got my chance.
There you go. Thank you, Pam. Mr. McCauley.
Last week or so, folks have been working on the outer part of City Hall. Foundation looks great, some repainting and mortar work on the brick, and hosing it down, cleaning it up for the first time in a number of years. It looks great. Whoever's done that for us, good job. Good luck to Randy in Wamisbee. I know it's been a long, three, four years of working on this, and good luck.
He's aged well.
He doesn't look a day over 95.
I'll fill up Dave's room.
And the last remark, hopefully the fireworks are done for another year. God, they were still going off last night till midnight outside my house.
We got them for Wamisbee.
What day is that with Wamisbee? I might have to.
Monday night.
I might have to go to Canadian Valley or Wheeling or something like that. It's, things are looking up in downtown. That's all I had.
Thank you. Jack?
Barbecue Bash was a huge success, and thanks to Jody and her committee for all their hard work. It was tremendous, as well as the city people that contributed. And Randy, Wamisbee's coming upon us. Even enough, when Randy started the process of Wamisbee, yeah, a fool had hair.
And it was probably dark, too.
Yeah, I'm attached.
I guess they don't think you've aged as well as I do.
But we're looking forward to it. We know it's going to be a stellar event, and look forward to that. It's good to see everybody.
Thanks, Jack. Mr. Thomas?
The Barbecue Bash was wonderful, and I heard nothing but good comments from many, many people. I thank Jody and your committee and everybody else that helped you. It was great. The, I'm still not a person that is very positive in regard to, fireworks are fine. It's the four days before, or four to five days afterward, firecrackers, individual fireworks that people set up in their neighborhood. I think it's, I love animals. And I know dogs and cats and birds and everything else, it's too long for them. And also, I have a lot of friends that are vets, some have PTSD, and they certainly don't like that time of the year. I still think we need to put a little bit of a clamp on how many days we're allowed for some of these awful loud fireworks to go off. And I would like people to think about their neighbors. I live in a very nice neighborhood, but I hear some terrible, terrible language sometimes, of people walking up and down the street. It's amazing. And I can't keep my mouth shut sometimes. I'll probably get punched out someday. But the little kids hear the slang that we have, unfortunately. And I just think we need to, you know, remember that, don't live in a mediaism society. Think about your neighbor and how you're affecting them. And y'all have a great time with Wamisbee. Randy, thanks for all the work you've done on that, along with all of the employees. And, you know, we're blessed to live in a place like Buchanan. That's it.
Thanks, David. CJ? Okay. Mr. Sanders, do you want to go last?
Yes.
Okay. You go ahead. All right. I echo all of my colleagues on council. Want to give a good shout out to Brian McDaniel's. Brian has done an excellent job of painting curbs around town. And I hope to goodness people notice it. Consolidated Public Works Board passed months ago a request to have a large painted section on Madison Street heading west at Wendy's, saying, "Do not enter." Because you take your life in your own hands when you try to pull out there. And it's been, there's been "do not enter" signs forever there, but adding another layer, if you will. So Brian got that painted last night. It looks great. I appreciate him working hard for us and helping our community look so nice, as well as all of our city employees. And, you know, I look forward to more sidewalk projects. You know, if you walk, it's amazing the difference, driving versus walking. I do a lot of walking in, around our neighborhoods. And when you, when you're walking, it's when you notice some of the blemishes that we have. And so we do need, we do have a need for significantly more comprehensive sidewalk projects throughout our community. We are a very, we're blessed to be a very walkable city. But we do, we do still have some issues out there that we will be putting our attention to. I echo what Pam said. I hope everybody is very welcoming and hospitable to our guests that will be joining us this month. This is a wonderful community. West Virginia has a long legacy of being a very hospitable state. The Mountaineer spirit, everybody is very nice and respectful here, and welcoming. And we want you to enjoy your time in our, in our Home Among the Hills. So I hope that that's extended to our friends who are coming to us from all around the world. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This will never be here again, at least in our lifetimes. But this is, this is really, it's a neat opportunity. I want to thank very much Mr. Sanders for putting this together and working so hard. And it's come together very nicely, even with a few hiccups along the way. There's going to be those, as any event planner knows. You're going to have hiccups along the way. But Randy has spearheaded something that has never been here before, and is doing a great job with it. And I thank you very much for all the time and dedication you've put in. And I hope that we all enjoy it. We will, please lend a helping hand if you have the opportunity to do so. This is going to be an all-hands-on-deck event for our community. So let's be, let's be a good family, and let's link arms and help each other with making this a great, a great time in our fair city. So with that, Mr. Sanders.
Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to council for your initiative 20 and a half years ago in approving this adventure. And it has been an adventure. And thanks to our city employees, they have stepped up in force, again, prepared for not only this event, but we had three other events in our community of substance. We had, of course, the West Virginia Derby Festival, who, or which was wonderful. I mean, it was just a fantastic celebration. 80-plus year history of that event. It's a large reason why we won the sanction for World Association of March and Sherbands, and I never want to forget that. You know, one of the things we did was explain the years and decade of success and the infrastructure that Buchanan has developed along with the members of the West Virginia Derby Festival over many, many years to produce an event of that magnitude. You know, I produced my very last pageant here in Buchanan, West Virginia. I began here producing pageants for the West Virginia Derby Festival, and I ended my career here producing the 2023 Miss West Virginia UFA pageant. So yes, I have retired from certain segments of my life. I do plan to continue with the City of Buchanan for as long as the council wants me in certain positions. And the citizens of Buchanan continue to elect me into the position of City Recorder. I enjoy the job very, very much. This will be my last major production as well. It's been a challenge, and we rallied, so we are just days away now. The 13th, our first band will arrive, coming in a bit early because of the travel. It's very difficult when you're traveling around the world. And I do want to put people's minds to rest. You know, we are going to be welcoming the world to Buchanan. In 37 years, I have worked with the Miss Universe Organization. And in those times, and I have been part of Miss Universe pageants in Russia. I was part of the Miss Universe pageant in Trinidad and Tobago. I was part of the Miss Universe pageants in Las Vegas. We've hosted the Miss Universe pageant several times in the United States. And each and every time we've done that, we welcome 80 to 90 countries to that pageant for two to three weeks without incident. And, you know, so I want to put people's minds to ease. You know, there's, there's no reason to be worried or have trepidations because we're having friends come from Canada, El Salvador, Ghana, Honduras, Poland, Switzerland, Taiwan, the United States, Venezuela, Hong Kong, Ireland, and Sweden. I've gotten to know these people over the last two and a half years, and they're just like us. You know, they love their children. They want their kids to have the very best opportunities. And 90% of them, maybe, I'm stretching, and maybe it's only about 80%, that will be setting foot on US soil for the very first time. And the Zoom calls I've had with classrooms full of people and students, their parents, who are just a lay that they have saved, and they have had bake sales, and they have sold hot dogs. And everything we do here to raise money, too. These are wonderful, wonderful people. One of our basic themes is, you know, the world's united by music, and, you know, and it's true. I mean, you know, that's a universal language of music. So, you know, embrace our visitors who will be here. They can't wait to be a part of the Buchanan community. You know, they've learned so much about Buchanan. I can't get over how much research many of them have done. Want to thank everybody that's helped with the media. We have a big blast coming up. If you watch WBOWI, WDTV, or any of your sister stations, you're going to see a lot over the next 10 days. And our local media, you know, have been tremendous in all of their efforts to spread the word, the word. I've still got interviews set up for tomorrow. I have two tomorrow, so we'll be doing those tickets. If you want to support this adventure, this event, you know, please consider purchasing tickets. Most events are $10 per event. Opening ceremonies, which features Lee Greenwood. Closing ceremonies with features of the United States Marine Drone and Bugle Corps. And yes, David, fireworks. We're going to have a glorious firework presentation for the first time on the campus of Westfield College. So you'll be able to sit in the stands and enjoy that. You know, those are $20 per. So please, support us in that effort. Our sponsors, I do want to recognize that the people who've had faith in this, in this event, include the City of Buchanan, the Dutch Miller Auto Group, West Virginia University Medicine, St. Joseph's Hospital, Randolph County Commission, National Endowment of the Arts, Creek Buchanan, Weston Buchanan, West Virginia Board of Realtors. We Are Farmers, Mike Ross and I O. Morris, Harrison County Commission. Jenkins Ford, Jenkins Subaru, the BPO Elks Lodge, Creek Buchanan Again, who hosted an elimination dinner. Community Care of West Virginia, Citizen Bank of West Virginia, Chase Bank, Century 21, Country Roads Realty, The Mills Group, Rouse Furniture and Mattress, Gravel Property Rentals, Potesta and Associates, Timothy Rees, and we have numerous anonymous donors as well. We still need help, so I'm not too frightful to say, you know, if you would like to be a sponsor, please reach out, contact us. $5, $500, $5,000 would be tremendously helpful as we go into these final months. We have, again, just a tremendous schedule planned. Go to wamsb2023.com, W-A-M-S-B-2023.com. Check out the additions on our website. That website will be updated quite a bit between now and the finals. And join us for just as many of the activities as possible. Also mentioned, the Gables Amusement, we'll be opening their carnival Tuesday night. They'll play through Saturday night. We will have an array of vendors. I believe we're 14 vendors in Jobone Park. I believe half of them are new to the area. We vetted, and we tried to just shake it up a little bit, bring some new vendors in. We have entertainment. We're going to kind of bring back some of the best and most popular groups from Festival Friday. Fridays over the past few years. So we booked a band for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night on Main Street. Friday night, we closed Main Street down for a festival atmosphere, music on Main. And center on Main Street on the Spring Street intersection will be Rick Cage Roadshow. And they will be putting on a fabulous, fabulous production. We'll have several other groups performing up and down Main Street. The Parade of Nations have come together nicely at noon Saturday. It takes place, we're close to 90 units. So, you know, and the nice thing about this is they're marching parade. So they're penalized if they stop. So there shouldn't be gaps. It should flow nicely because they have to march. The mayor is going to be joined by the mayor of Elkins on foot. So they have to.
We have to march.
They gotta march and they can't stop. So they gotta shake hands on the fly.
Where's it starting and then that one?
They'll follow the same parade route as the Strawberry Festival Parade.
Got a loss there. So, okay, that's all right. So anyway, it's going to be a tremendous, tremendous event. Thanks you for your patience with my work here at the city and throughout. So join us. Let's have a glorious time and let's welcome the world in style. So again, I'm waiting to thank you. I'm sorry.
Are any of the businesses downtown that close at 5 o'clock in the morning, are they extending their hours?
Well, Pam, I invite businesses to take advantage of this opportunity. I think this, I mean, the basis for any of this, whether it be Jody's production, whether it be the Strawberry Festival, the Strawberry Festival is born on the idea of promoting strawberries, selling more strawberries. I invite businesses on Main Street to remain open late. Try it out. Give it an opportunity. What's the worst you can do? Make a couple of extra sales, you know? It costs you, your lease is the same if you're leasing your property on Main Street. I guarantee you, if you stay open until seven or eight on the night, the landlord will not increase your rent that month. I'm going to speak on behalf of the landlords. They're not going to come in and go, oh, you were open two more hours this month. We're going to increase your rent. No, you'll just make some more money. So this is an opportunity for economic growth in this community. Palm Springs said they enjoyed about a $1 million boost to their economy when they hosted it. So take advantage of all that, all of those opportunities. We have hotel rooms booked throughout central West Virginia. We have, the hotels are booked well up at Wheeling and from our reports, not only because of Wambsby, but it's a good, strong summer travel season, you know, I want to mention that. But again, it is a good economic boom prior. So I invite businesses on Main Street throughout Upper County, take advantage of it. Any other questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
We will, we will look forward to it. Okay, well, it's 9:06. Good meeting. Again, we will not see you until August the 3rd. I will have just come back from municipally Board of Directors meeting and general meetings. I hope I learned something interesting to bring back to you. So, and we'll have a report, I'm sure, to wrap up Wambsby. So thank you all and have a great weekend.